All right, I call to order this Tuesday, October 8th, 2019 workshop at the Powhatan County School Board. Madam Clerk, if you'll let the minutes reflect that all members of the School Board are present this evening along with Dr. Jones. Are there any changes necessary to the draft agenda presented for the members? Changes? Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor of approving the draft agenda for the workshop, please respond with aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Takes us to our first public comment period of the workshop, our first and only public comment period of the workshop. In accordance with School Board policies BDDH and KD, any resident of Powhatan County may address the board during public comment. At this time, citizens are invited to address the board. When it's your turn to speak, please come to the podium, wait to be recognized by the chair. Each individual will have three minutes and delegations will have five minutes to provide their comments. Please respect this time limitation so others may address the board. A maximum of thirty minutes will be designated for public comment this evening. Please address your comments to the board as a whole, not individual board members, the audience or staff, and please begin by stating your name. Board requests that all speakers maintain an environment that promotes listening and respect. The board will not respond or address issues raised by speakers during the course of public comment, and speakers are reminded that the board chair has authorized to stop or remove speakers who use vulgar, disruptive, or threatening language. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines is greatly appreciated. Public comment period is open. Once again, public comment period is open. All right, seeing no movement, I'll bring public comment period to a close. Dr. Jones, I believe that takes us to our presentation of the evening.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We have four presentations for the board this evening. The first two revolve around our strategic plan. This is a continuation from last month. We started with Goal Two because we were waiting on some data from Goal One to finish out our review of last year's results, and we're going to start by going through some of the highlights from Goal One in our first year of our strategic plan. Dr. Mahendra?
And that is our goal to define performance objectives? And each of the goals has those subcategories of the key performance objectives. Dynamic learning environments, providing personalized instruction around literacy and numeracy by grade three, balanced assessment programming so that we can use formative and performance-based assessments, identifying and reducing achievement gaps with student groups, leveraging technology so that we can have personalized learning around the five Cs of communication, collaboration, creativity, critical thinking, and citizenship, identifying opportunities for career awareness, exploration, and work experience. So those are the key performance objectives that we have under personalized learning. What I'd like to present to you all are some strategies that we use to those key performance objectives. So in order to create dynamic learning environments, we have different opportunities throughout the school division. So one of the things that we saw that we implemented in year one of our strategic plan is that we offered flexible seating grants so that we could change the look of some of our classrooms. We did that at the middle school with our overall projects, but then we did that in several classrooms throughout the rest of the division this spring and summer. Of course, we did open new Powhatan Middle School, which is a very creative and very dynamic learning environment, very different than our traditional model. We've got our Powhatan Education Foundation grants that allow us to implement different things within the classroom that create that dynamic learning environment. We had something implemented through our partnership with SEDEXO this year where we had a culinary competition, something a little bit different way of approaching things from a learning environment standpoint. We've incorporated Kid Pan Alley over the last few years. Comic Con was a new activity that was implemented at the middle school for some of our students, as well as the creation of our innovation lab at PMS. So those are just some examples of how we are creating dynamic learning environments for our students. A second KPO is to provide personalized instruction, and some examples of that across the division. We combined our STEM night this year so that we could provide more opportunities that were more personalized with our students because we housed everything in one place. So that was a different approach for the STEM night, but that was a successful one. We also use guided reading across the division that we can personalize instruction based on what student-specific needs are. We implemented math workshops this year at the elementary school primarily, but have incorporated some of those philosophies and strategies at the secondary level as well. And we have our teachers, really when you talk about personalized instruction, it's about getting into understanding what each individual student needs, and our VTSS program allows us to reflect on our practices for each specific student that may have a different learning need. Ways that we identified and reduce achievement gaps in this first year of the strategic plan, again through our VTSS program, we are progress monitoring for each of our students and specifically looking at different reporting groups for students. We held our first diversity fair. We participated in a study, a regional study through Merck. It's a consortium that we belong to, a research consortium that we belong to, about teacher professional development and how that may impact our students with different demographics. We also used Virginia Center for Inclusive Communities at several of our schools, specifically at our middle school, to work on specific issues that were occurring there. And then we had two, really the emergence, even though some of these had already been in existence, of two pretty special groups at the middle and high school, Diverse Hands at Work, and Multicultural Student Association. So these are just some of the activities that were going on at each of the schools around identifying, reducing achievement gaps. In order to leverage technology to increase personalized learning opportunities, at the elementary school, we incorporated CSOW. It was a new technology, have had great reviews from the community and the parents about the implementation of CSOW and what that's meant for them, understanding what their children are doing in the classroom. The high school implemented a design thinking course that was for a small group of students but allowed them to do really more specialized things that were specific to their student learning. We implemented one-to-one at Powhatan Middle School, so each of our students at the middle school has a Chromebook. We continue to develop and utilize our maker spaces at all of our schools and utilize Schoology as our learning management system for instruction. And at the teacher level, in order to use technology, we had several choices for them to participate in professional development. It could be something that was online, it could have been face-to-face, but gave them a menu of choices as well for professional development. For the final two KPOs, the second to last one is developing a balanced assessment program. We did some defining of balanced assessment across the division so that our staff would know what that meant, but the way that we were implementing some different types of assessments across the division, both writing and history, we're implementing performance-based assessments at the high school. Those are things that we've seen over time already at the elementary and the middle level in both science and social studies, but are implementing them at a greater level at the high school, and we will be able to use the writing performance-based assessment as the verified credit for our students at the high school. We also reduced, again, the number of, and of course, SOL tests, and that was part of the changes within the accreditation system. So we saw fewer SOL tests at the high school level and some at the middle school if they were enrolled in high school credit courses. And then we provided professional development for our teachers over the course of the summer about developing and implementing those performance-based assessments. In order to identify and provide opportunities for career awareness, exploration, and work experience through our CTE department, we have implemented Project Lead the Way. We also had our first-ever National CTE Signing Day, which was very exciting with our electricity students who actually signed contracts with local contractors for what they would do after they graduated from Powhatan County Public Schools. We implemented a program called Major Clarity, which will allow our students to track what their career plans and ideas are over the course of their secondary time with us. We also continue to incorporate mock interviews throughout the year in different capacities. We just actually did that the last week at the high school. CBI, our CBI students continue to have workplace opportunities, and we implemented a firefighting course. So again, different ways that we can get career awareness, exploration, and experience out there for our students. So those are just some examples of things that we're doing and strategies that we have in place to meet the personalized learning goal of our students. I'll speak a little bit more about the outcomes of what's happening with Goal One when we get into the next presentation.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Questions or comments for Dr. Mahendra or Dr. Jones?
I have one. Back to Slide Five, the CSOW implementation.
Yes.
You mentioned that was at the elementary level.
Yes.
So is that like Schoology and Power School, or what? Explain what that is.
It's more about using students, creating things at the school level using technology and then being able to share it in a real-world way with their families.
Oh, so it has nothing to do with grades, or?
No.
It's just their work?
No, no. It's actually a learning tool.
A learning tool.
Not a learning management system.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Other questions or comments?
I have just one.
Mrs. Ayers.
Just a quick overview of what Kid Pan Alley?
Yes.
I remember hearing about that, but I don't remember. There's a part missing.
Yes. So Kid Pan Alley is a program where it's an outside group that comes in. They take a piece of artwork or something within the community. The students learn more about it, and then musicians come in and they work with the students to write music around that piece of art, and then they perform it in a culminating experience at the end of the week. It's really pretty phenomenal.
Okay. That connected the dot for me.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Other questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Dr. Mahendra. Dr. Jones?
Sure. The next presentation is an overview of our KPIs. This is kind of the dashboard that we've been talking about that we're offering to you for your review that kind of has the key performance indicators for all four of our goals. We've tried to provide it for you in a way that is easy to review and so that you can track progress over the next five years. This past year was our baseline year since there's our new goals and new indicators, or in some cases, new indicators for these goals. So we wanted to provide these for you so that you could see how they align with each of our four strategic goals.
So I'll give a little bit more information about how this was developed. Those of us who worked on the strategic plan at the was before the scope of the current strategic plan. We wanted you all to have at least something to see where there may have been change or growth over time, but also this now, 2018-19, is our baseline information for the strategic plan. So the second column is actually the baseline information. On the far right-hand side, you'll find if there's information that's required with notes or data sources that might be important to understanding these items better, we've tried to explain that there. There are a few things that are either in the works or being developed, or maybe things that are done in alternate years. So for example, under Goal Two for leveraging talent, which is on the second page, there are some things that are under the comprehensive benefits study. That's something that will be done in every other year, so you will not see data for this year currently because it will be something that's done next year. So those are some of the rationales as to why you may see differing things within the data cells.
All right. Questions at this point? Comments?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Coleman?
On the first one, it says percent.
Yes.
You got two numbers in there.
Absolutely. So the first number is a PALS number, and the second number is the BAS number. So PALS is defined as the phonological awareness literacy screening, and BAS is the benchmark assessment system that is part of that Fontes and Pennell program that we're using at the elementary school. So the two numbers look very different in some cases by grade level, and really that's because what they test is different, even though they are reading measures. What they are measuring within reading is different, so you might see differentials for individual students or an entire grade level, but that does give us the data that we need then to best address the specific needs of individual students.
Thank you.
All right.
Yes, sir.
I swear, it would be a practice. Did that ever come to any type of? I know we used to do a survey through CTE. I just don't think that would be relevant data, but I just wondered what happened to that data warehouse idea.
So I actually was on the DOE website as I was working through some of this and looking for that information, and they actually have something listed there, but there is no data that's within that and that item for the DOE. But I did run across that when I was working on it. Though we have had conversations as we were working on this specifically to see if there is a way that we can locally identify that information, and I think that would be something worthwhile, especially when we're looking at what are the specific outcomes that we are providing for our students. I think our graduates would provide the best answers for that.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I think it would be good information.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Other questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Dr. Mahendra. Jones?
And I think Dr. Mahendra has the next presentation. We're going to change gears slightly and move to school calendar. This is our second or third update on school calendar, and Dr. Mahendra has some information to share from her most recent calendar committee meeting, as well as some updates from the region.
So this is our third presentation, our second update of the initial presentation. So yes, I do have some information. We did do a division-wide survey, a huge response to our survey, which is why the number is so big on the slide. Over fifteen hundred people participated, from middle school students, high school students, parents, parents who are also employees, so a wide variety of folks who participated. I checked the past few years and the range of responses on other calendars. Surveys has been ninety to one-hundred-and-fifty-eight, so ten times what we are normally seeing. Clearly, it's something that people are wanting to have input on. As far as the results went, and I know you all have seen them more specifically, that the School Board has more specific information, but I did want to summarize this for you all. You can see how the breakdown of the participants, that almost two-thirds of the participants were parents. Another eight percent of those were parents who also happened to be employees, so a large representation of our parent community. We had fifteen percent of the total group that are students, whether it's middle or high school, and then eleven percent who were just employees. We asked them about what might be the reasons that other school divisions that you might want to partner with to have our calendar match, and it came out, as you can see, these were just divisions that had fifty or more responses. Certainly, there were individual ones here and there, but the largest response was they would like our calendar to match with Chesterfield, then Henrico, and then all the way down through Prince Edward County. We also asked the community what benefits that they would see that might be important to them if we had an earlier start date, and the largest response with seven hundred and thirty-three was that they would like to end the school year closer to the Memorial Day holiday. And then the second most popular response was to end the first semester before the winter holiday, followed by none of those considerations were important to them, and then the opportunity to minimize the impact of a shortened summer because of Labor Day starting so late this year, and then finally, instruction prior to regional and national assessments, so being able to start two weeks earlier than in previous years. And then the pie chart at the bottom of this slide includes information that they wanted to have you to know that whether they were for it, against it, or possibly considering it. So forty-seven percent of the respondents said yes, they were interested in starting before Labor Day. Thirty-seven percent said no, and thirteen percent that they may consider We also gave them the opportunity to provide comments, and there were over three hundred and fifty written comments. And again, you all have seen, have had access to those specific comments, but I did want to summarize those comments by topic so that people understood what the thought was of the community about these options. So eighty percent of them said just plain out, don't change anything. No other comment further than?
Dr. Mahendra, could I ask you to go back just a moment?
Certainly.
Would you repeat the chart that's at the bottom of Slide Four? What does other mean?
So other was, they had a choice where they could say something other than yes, no, or maybe.
A free-form block kind of thing?
It was, and so there were things like, I'd rather us have year-round school, or have you considered having one-week early start instead of a two-week early start, or they may have just said yes or no in their own way, in their own words. And if you all would like those specific comments, I can provide those to you all as well because they are available, those written comments of what that three percent is.
And that's what I wanted to make sure of, just so I saw the colors correctly.
Yes.
The three percent is the, I mean, I'm sorry, the other is the three percent category.
Yes. Opportunity to say that. In the previous question, they wanted to make sure that that was understood by the School Board, and that was the way it was phrased, is what do you want the School Board to hear, and that's what they wanted you all to hear. Forty-seven comments, rather, were related somehow to impact on vacation, and that was what they wanted you to have information about. Thirty-four comments were just nothing specific, just kind of a general philosophy of what they thought about calendars. Thirty comments were yes, change it, but no more information than just yes, change it. And then you can see some of the other items that they wanted to talk about. Year-round school, impact of heat, impact on extracurriculars and sports, consideration of other divisions, college and part-time jobs, and so on and so forth for those other options of those After we got this information from the survey, we had our September nineteenth calendar meeting. It was an expanded group that we had, and we had twenty-one attendees of parents, teachers, and administrators. At that meeting, we reviewed the survey results. In summary, just as you all have seen it here, we also discussed the original School Board, or actually the second School Board presentation that I provided, and they requested some additional data based on the conversation that we had in that committee meeting. So I have provided some of the requested data and the opportunity for the feedback in a follow-up email to the committee. I let them know that we were going to meet again and present this information to you all as a School Board, but that we would meet as a committee after this presentation. And you can see the representation of the calendar committee by district, by school, and by role.
Excuse me, Dr. Mahendra.
Yes, ma'am.
Could you add the two, the two additional ones by district, under District Five, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Do we have a total of four now?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. The calendar committee, as we had our discussion that evening, they asked us to provide a list of benefits to a pre-Labor Day start and a list of benefits to a post-Labor Day start. I compiled this information from the discussion that we had that evening, as well as the presentations that we have had, and I also offered them the opportunity, if they had feedback or additional benefits, that they would like me to list in this presentation for the School Board, that they had the opportunity to provide that information. So you can see the benefits of the start dates that were discussed. For the pre-Labor Day start, again, ending prior to winter break, aligning the dual enrollment calendar with the high school calendar, opportunities for advanced placement students to get extra instruction, ending the school year two weeks earlier, aligning athletic seasons with academic calendars, consistency with neighboring divisions. This one was one that was new to something that we hadn't discussed prior, which was the duration of uninterrupted instructional time during the first semester versus having a second, first semester that overlaps after holiday break, and then maybe is impacted by weather at that timeframe as well. Similar preparation time for regional district arts and band competitions. They noted that some of our competitions are with some of these schools that start earlier, so they are receiving instruction prior to when we start our instruction, and then the late date of Labor Day for this year. The benefits for the post-Labor Day start, as discussed with the group, was that there has been a traditional calendar in place that people are tied to, and that has been in place since the late nineteen eighties. They had talked about the access to vacation discounts, the availability to established daycare and camp programs. There was a discussion around acclimating to athletics and band programming prior to academics starting so that students wouldn't have too much on their plate at one time, concerns about the heat on the buses, and maintaining family traditions, and a lengthier summer vacation than even this year's summer vacation that would occur in 2020. They also shared that the benefit of not starting early was that there were some large neighboring districts that also would not be starting early that have already committed to that. The committee also asked for some additional information, and so these are just some of the statistics that I provided to them based on what they had requested. They wanted to have information about how many students were participating in dual enrollment and advanced placement classes because that was one of the benefits of starting earlier, was the alignment of dual enrollment with our high school calendar as well as advanced placement students. So you could see the number of students that would be impacted by that additional instructional time. They also asked about how many students were in the marching band, both for what the impact might be on summer practices or being able to get ready for competitions earlier in the marching band season. They asked for information on fall and spring sports to know how many students were participating prior to the start of the school date in early August, and then also those who may be impacted if they went into regional or state play at the end of the school year based on spring sports. And then they talked about average daily temperatures and concerns about heat on the bus, and so I gave them an outline of what the weather.gov provides for average daily temperatures in June and August based on the different start dates. So the next step is to provide to you all the draft calendars, as well as to provide them to the committee of the pre- and post-Labor Day start. We have tentatively planned on a second or a final calendar committee meeting on October twenty-fourth, and then at that final committee meeting, we'll review those drafts and then provide a recommendation from the superintendent to the School Board, along with information from the final committee meeting.
All right. Very informative. So questions or comments from the board? Mrs. Ayers?
I see that a lot of people wanted to be closely connected with Chesterfield, so I was anticipating that they were going to make that decision at their meeting, and I've heard last night unfortunately that they are putting that on the newly-elected board that will be coming on in November. So, you know, I mean, is a new board going to come on and change the calendar for next year? I doubt that.
I can't anticipate that.
No.
I know that the administration in Chesterfield is moving forward with presenting both of the calendars to the newly-elected board, but that won't be until, they won't be seated until January.
Exactly.
So certainly, that's a consideration that we will have to take into account. You know, that's a factor that does come into play.
And Hanover made their decision that they will not be changing?
Hanover, Henrico, and Richmond are not changing this year.
Not this year, but anticipating the following year, or is there no anticipation?
Six months ago, they were anticipating doing it this year, so I don't know.
You and I were at regional meetings together, and everybody was like, oh yeah, we're doing it.
Right.
And then they've all changed their minds.
Yep. So I know that they want to study the issue similar to what we're doing this year, that they plan on doing that beginning next spring, summer, to have an early start and to look at it extensively in the following year.
Okay.
All right. Other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'm heartened by the number of comments and the number of people participating in the survey. You know, it's great to have this many people that have an opinion and want to be involved. You know, and I don't think there's a wrong decision here. I think that whatever decision we make, there are going to be people that are going to be ecstatic, and there are going to be people that are not happy. So, and I think, like I said a couple of meetings ago, I think it comes down to what we believe is best for the students. You know, and so we'll have to consider that as we go forward. One piece of information that, you know, that we might want, I don't think we have any buses with air conditioning, do we?
We do. We have some of our special education buses have it. Yes, sir.
Right, right. So that's a piece-
And activity buses, yes.
Yeah, that's a piece of information that I guess would be- Yeah, that's a, that's a piece of information that I guess would be relevant to share. You know, and, you know, they've covered a lot of things on here. You know, it's interesting, I found it interesting that the concerns about camp and daycare were on the post-Labor Day start, and they could just as easily be on the pre-Labor Day start. If, you know, it depends on what happens in Chesterfield. I mean, if Chesterfield changes calendars, then most of those, most of those camps, and Chesterfield and Palatine are going to change dates to correspond to when the kids are available. So I don't, I don't see that as, I don't see that as a barrier either way. It's when you, you cross into division where the, where the camp is being offered and that division's in a different, is on a different calendar that it's going to be a problem. So, you know, it's change with a capital C. And we don't tend to, we always tend to hesitate with change. So, you know, I'll be interested to see what the, what the calendar committee recommends after the next meeting. And I hope, you know, you've got a lot of people there, and I assume they're going to take a straw vote of some sort and give us some recommendation on what they want.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you for doing this. You know, it's, it's great to have this kind of participation. I wish we had it in some other things.
All right, other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Kunkka.
I attempted to look through the 22 pages of raw comments. And I did read all of the ones from the students. And I was kind of surprised, pleased to see that it really seemed about 50/50. That there were, there were students that were for it, there were students that were against it. Some had some valid reasons both ways. But I think that, you know, if this type of change is going to become more common, that some of the, some of the adjustments that have to be made in the private sector are going to be made. The daycares will adjust to it, people will adjust family schedules to it. You know, and if, and if, like Mr. Cole says, you're going to have half the people against it and half the people for it, I think it, it's easy then, it comes down to academics. What's going to be best for the kids academically? And the rest of it will sort itself out, and that's my opinion on it.
All right, Mrs. Emel, did you have a comment?
I did. I, in District Five, do not have people that are for it. They are not for it. I had one call that was on the fence. And I went to the meeting because I wanted to get more feedback. And I did go through the 22-page comments, because this is, a lot of people are feeling that this is being pushed on, on them so quickly. And I understand that, I guess I don't understand, for the legislature, that this has been something they've wanted for so long. To me, it's on the bottom of requests. I'd like to see the legislature put some more money into teacher salaries and give us more money to run our district. To me, that's more important. Many of the, of the public, and it was stated at the meeting there, they felt like the survey was one-sided. And I believe, did you talk to that as I came in? I think you were talking about bringing up, Dr. Amahndra, the questions and how you wrote the questions, because many people have commented to me that it's one-sided, like this is what you want to do. So how are we going to do it?
I'll address that, thank you. Anytime you're giving out a survey for a change, I think it's important that you state the reasons why you're bringing forward a change. So the survey did have some background information. That was information that was pulled from the school board presentation about the possible reasons why we would be looking and, at this issue and looking at making a change. So while I understand that there were more reasons about why we were making a change, the intent of that was to educate the people who haven't been following this closely, that the, as to why this survey is going out and why we're even looking at this and what the potential benefits would be. Keeping the status quo, the potential benefits are you keep things as they are. So we didn't feel the need to list all of those in the survey, because we, people know what they currently do. But the question that we thought people would have is, why are we even considering this? What are the potential benefits? So that's why we had the benefits on the survey.
Okay, well, thank you for explaining that, because I think that's important to be out to the public. The, the one big comment was that finishing the semester at the holiday break, the December break. And the problem is, though, you would have to start three weeks early for that to happen. Because it's three weeks still in January that we have of a, of a semester. Or else we would be cutting Thanksgiving holiday and some other holidays.
Dr. Jones?
Thank you. The belief is, at least in us looking at it potentially as a potential benefit, that the time would be enough, that the first semester would be a few days shorter than the second semester, but it would be close enough that it would be worth it to do that at that natural breaking point of having two weeks off and being able to come back in January and start the second semester fresh. The other thing is, is that we're also looking at whether we're going to continue doing midterm exams at the high school level, which is a week and a half of testing and then preparation for testing, so that if we didn't do those right before Christmas, that it would basically be a wash in terms of time for first semester and second semester.
Okay, well, what is the reason we're doing this? If, if this is the reason we're doing this, is for the students to have the break, then I think we need to be able to firmly state that that's going to happen. But according to the comments here, it's not for sure going to happen. And, because I, I started, when I taught, I started in August. And we went, our second break was in, like it is here.
Right.
So many, many schools start in August. They say they're going to break it at the holiday, but they don't. And so I think that if that's what we're saying, we're going to turn, change this calendar to change it for the students, then I think we should commit to doing that.
So.
Dr. Amahndra?
Two things. Back to the original question about having three weeks prior, or three weeks after the Christmas break, and that we came back and extended the semester, and if we're only starting two weeks early. We also found that when we come back after Christmas break, because we've had two weeks off, teachers are ramping back up, and some of that instructional time isn't as valuable as if it were that continuous instructional time prior to the break. But as far as other school divisions, that we have neighboring school divisions, one right north of the river starts two weeks prior to us and finishes their semester at the, at the winter break, just as we do. I mean, we would if we were to move forward with this calendar. So we would be able to align it. The way the, the calendar legislation is written, or the school hours legislation, it just says a total number of hours and a total number of days. How we determine to break those into quarters or semesters is up to the locality to do that within the calendar. And we can do that and provide the appropriate amount of instructional time prior to the semester break. The reason that the way, the benefits were written as a potential to start before winter break was at that time, when we initially were starting to talk about it, there was a one-week early start on the table. There was a two-week early start on the table when we first started those discussions. If there were an only one-week early start, we may not be able to compact it into a single semester prior to winter break. But we would commit to starting before winter break. And the draft that will be shown to the, the calendar committee will have that hard break at winter break if we start before Labor Day.
Two weeks before Labor Day.
Yes.
Okay, so then that would be where we, the comment was about the, the days during each break. So we, or during each semester, or each nine-week period. So then the first two semesters would be much shorter than the last two, if I was correct in seeing that on, the comments on the, the calendar committee on page five, where it says a total of 80 for the first semester and then 100 for the second semester.
We can get you the draft calendar with the days broken down. It wouldn't be that many, that's 20 days, that's four weeks, that's nowhere near that. So the question that we would have to address is, or commit to, I think, is midterm exams at the secondary, at the high school level. But we can get you a breakdown. I think it would be a total of five or six days difference if we took out the exams, which would be two or three days per nine weeks difference.
We also note that we often have days that we miss, that we don't make up for instructional time in our second semester due to weather. So the reality is, is that our second semester often has been, in recent years, shorter, as well as with testing at the end of the year. The instructional time that occurs at, at the end of the second semester is negatively impacted by testing that we have statewide testing that's required, so.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to point that out, that the, the committee was talking about how many, what, what is the reason, why are we doing this? And they asked for this, people that were involved in the sports and in the band. So I'm glad to see you put that information on. They were trying to figure out how, how many students were involved. And if we're really doing this for the students, I really want to see if we're going to change this, that we do put the break there like we're supposed to. Because, like I said, I taught for 21 years. We started in the second week of August, and we went for our second semester break in January, after the third week. And if we're going to say this to parents, that this is the reason why we're doing it, I want us to be backing it up, doing it that way. Otherwise, I, you know, like some of them have said, they, the one comment was, after reading and analyzing the presentation, it is not clear to me what benefits would positively impact my family or the masses. So if that's the one reason, it's the students, then that's what I want to see in black and white. Because otherwise, I don't see the reason to change this. And I think that was it. Thank you.
Dr. Jones, do you have a comment?
I, I think there are multiple reasons for students. And I certainly think that we could, and we will make it clear to the calendar, that the draft calendar that we're showing would show that the first semester would end in December, so that they can take that into account when they're looking at and making their recommendation. There are other benefits that are listed that are student-centered, about having the extra two weeks of instruction before standardized testing, before other assessments related to not just AP students, dual enrollment students, CTE students, band and music students. So there are multiple students, and Dr. Amahndra has the numbers that we're looking at in the presentation. And it is a significant number of students that would benefit from having that extra two weeks of instruction, which is really the main reason, one, that so many people lobbied to have the autonomy to make this change, and two, why so many districts have gone to a pre-Labor Day start when they had the flexibility to do so. Two-thirds of the school divisions in the state have a pre-Labor Day start, and for many other reasons listed there, and there may be other reasons that are specific to their community. So those, those benefits are listed, and I think they are there. And I certainly understand that this is a change and that timing is everything. So we'll wait and hear what the calendar committee has to say about that and then come forward with a recommendation for the board to consider.
All right, thank you.
I have one other thing, Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Emel.
I forgot to mention, I wanted to speak about the year-round school. I was, I don't want to say surprised, but I have heard talk that people in this county would like us to look at year-round school. And this has been brought up in comments during this survey, as well as people requesting that. So there, I also saw that one of the comments was, they thought this was a step to that. And I don't see that as a step to that. But I do think that we ought to consider year-round school if, if we're going to think about students and what's best for them is not having as much time off. So I wanted to throw that on the table as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Emel. Other comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, just, just one, just a couple of quick things. One is that, one, this board member was very excited when, when the legislature gave us the opportunity to set around calendar dates. I mean, that was, that was the objection, I think, from the Richmond area schools, was that we were being told by the Capitol when we could start our school. And, you know, and basically, they had locked their calendar in. And at the same time, they were giving two-thirds of the school divisions across the state the ability to waive it. So basically, it was legislation that really primarily affected the people around Richmond area. So, you know, we, we just, we wanted fair treatment, basically, we wanted the opportunity. We don't have to start beforehand. The second thing I would say is, is follow up with what Dr. Amahndra said. Mrs. Emel, you made some good points about making that break at, at winter break. But as a former teacher, you also probably remember that the three or four days before Christmas generally are not exactly the most productive in terms of academic time on task. So, you know, I think it's great, I think, I think we need to have that, that break at Christmas time, because otherwise, we do lose two or three instructional days by and large before the holiday. We come back after the holiday, it takes us two or three days to get going again. And then we take another break to take exams later on. So hopefully, we can eliminate two of those. We can eliminate that break before Christmas if we do have exams. You know, we're using that break, we're using that time, we're generally down with students engaged in, in testing and assessment, which I think is a good thing. And then when they come back after break, they're starting over again. We're not going back and, and doing the, we're going to do some review, obviously, when we come back. But we're not doing reviews, so we can take an assessment a week down the road. So, you know, once again, I want to see us do what's right for the students. I think you're absolutely right in saying if we do the two weeks, we really need to look at putting exams beforehand. And I think that, that as a board, we can say that that's, you know, if we have exams, we want to have them before, before break. And, you know, we've always had nine weeks that weren't exactly 45 days or whatever they have to be to come out to be 180. They've always been adjusted a little bit based on what we need to do. And, and we have that flexibility, and it's good that we do. So great discussions, and I appreciate the comments that people have made on this.
All right, other questions or comments? All right, I have, I have a couple. I have a question and a comment. So the question is, would you just speak a little bit more about if, if we were to adopt this alternate calendar that's been presented or proposed, how would summer school work in terms of managing that and the hours and days for that? What would that look like?
Sure. So we actually have done some forecasting with that. And to think, not just summer school, but summer, as you've seen in my previous presentations, summer's a busy time for our staff, whether it's cleaning facilities or training for professional development, curriculum writing, we do a lot during the summer. So changing that would make us need to shift some of those events as well. Specifically, summer school, though, we would like to explore the idea of maintaining our traditional July calendar, but we also could look at starting summer school a week earlier than we had, potentially up to two weeks earlier than we had. So we, we would look at what those options might be. But that would be based on where the start date of that particular school year was, because it won't always be the 24th of August. It might be the 17th of August or the 28th of August, depending on, on where things lie. So again, we are still looking at what that might look like. But it will still be the four weeks that are designated for summer school within the, within the division.
Okay.
There are other divisions that do longer summer school, ours is four weeks.
Okay. All right, so in, in the comments, comments that I would offer then are, first, I very much view the issue of the authority of this school board to make a decision about the start date to be a separate issue of what we decide. I support the General Assembly's decision. I think that was the right thing to do, to grant the power to the counties and cities for the school boards to make the decision for what is right for the people in their community, the children in their community, their community as a whole. Now I think we're at a point, as our community, this board is now trying to make a decision about what is best for our county. And we've talked a lot about change up here, and I really believe change provides opportunities. But I think as a board, it is really, it's, it's our obligation to be thoughtful in how we approach this. And that's very much what, what I think I and others encourage the staff to do, is go seek additional information, bring it back to us, give us a good feeling for what the community, how the community feels about this issue, what their thoughts are. We ask you to expand the composition of the calendar committee and then the survey. And it frankly, it's, does not surprise me at all that there were 1,564 responses. Because this is an issue, I think, that has really caused quite a bit of discussion in the community. A lot of people have, have talked about this issue. And I, and I would say that my experience has been a little bit like what Ms. Emel's has and what Ms. Ayers has. I've had a lot of people speak to me about it, even if just in passing, you know, at, at an event at the school or somewhere else. And I, I probably have had more at this point tell me that, that they're unsure about this than I have that have said, this is the thing we need to do. But I've had a lot of them tell me that they, they're concerned if our calendar doesn't line up against Chesterfield's and Henrico's and- line up against Chesterfields and Henrico's. And generally, that's usually followed by, "I work there," or "I have some, some circumstance that draws me there," and it could cause me some challenges if they don't. So, I think that that's part of the discussion. And I don't, I don't dispute and wouldn't dispute the questions about the value of the academic days and those other things. I'm not a professional educator, but I do believe it's important that the community have a voice in this. And I think we are trying very hard to give the community a voice in this. I'm very heartened, as Mr. Cole said, by the response level, 1,564. I don't remember seeing a response level approaching that for anything else we've asked our parents and our community to, to give us feedback on. And I think that's great, because that's what we ask for, that's what we encourage up here as a board. We talk about that all the time. We'd love to see the community be more involved in these decisions, give us their feedback. And I think it's great. And I hope that this is the first of many issues that we get that level of response on. And I would say that at this point, I'm looking forward to you bringing us back additional information from the committee, and if there are other ideas or thoughts about how to continue to engage the community in this discussion. I think that's really valuable, because this is an issue that impacts our students, our families, the time that we encourage families to spend with their students in the summer and other things. We want to do what supports our community as a whole. So, overall, I appreciate the level of feedback. This is great. I read through this, and I would say it's easier to read in paper. I appreciate you having provided a copy for us. But I was, I was very interested to read the comments, because they're very broad. I mean, they, they cover a lot of thoughts, things that I had not thought about, things that wouldn't necessarily impact my family. But I think that's okay. I think it's great that we have the benefit of that and considering what we do in making this. So, thank you for sharing that information with us. And again, look forward to additional information in the future. So, those are my comments. Any, any other questions or comments from members of the board? All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Dr. Jones?
Thank you, sir. Next item is a presentation on final accreditation report. The state's finally released the final accreditation data for the 2019, 2018, 2019 school year. And Dr. Mahundro has one final presentation tonight to give you on accreditation.
Great. Thank you.
We've kept you busy tonight, Dr. Mahundro.
Yes. Well, and the good news is regardless of when we, when we start school, we have an amazing school system, and this final accreditation report bears that out. So, once again, all of our schools are accredited. You heard in the past a term, "Fully accredited." That's no longer a term that is used under the new accreditation system. But this is the highest level of accreditation that you can get, and that's where we are. So, this accreditation information was released just, just a week ago, on the 30th. So, this is hot off the presses. This is just a reminder to you all about how they determine accreditation. There are three broad categories that they use. One is student achievement, and that is using English, math, math pass rates, and science pass rates. Achievement gaps, they look at achievement gaps in both the areas of English and in math. And under student engagement, they look at indicators based on graduation and completion index. That's a graduation rate, a statewide graduation rate. They look at dropout rates, obviously, that's at the high school only. Chronic absenteeism is the way that they measure student engagement. They believe that if students are coming to school, then that means that they're engaged in the school process. And a new, or the final quality indicator is not yet being measured. That's the college, career, and civic readiness category, and I'll speak to that later in the presentation. As I mentioned, there are three levels of accreditation. We are at the highest, which is just simply accredited. And that's that we have all of our school quality indicators at level one or level two. So, you're going to see greens and yellows, more greens than yellows across the board as I'll go through each school. So, the first school I want to share with you is Flat Rock. And you can see they are level one in every accreditation category or indicator that they are eligible for. Some specific successes around the final accreditation report is, they saw a growth in economically disadvantaged students and their performance on math SOLs of, an increase of 10 points. And their absenteeism is down over 4% over the last three to four years. So, they have made a targeted focus on making sure that kids are coming to school, that they understand the importance of being in school, and that, I think, has positive impact on the instruction that those students are receiving. Areas of focus, even though we're all green, and these, we also have to make sure that we are looking deeper into the data. So, some of the areas of focus, specifically in English, students with disabilities are sitting at a level two. And math students with disabilities are at a level two. So, those are things that we're working on at Flat Rock. Then we go over to Pocahontas Elementary. And again, you're going to see all level green, all level one for accreditation. The successes that they saw this year in reading, both black students and Hispanic students saw increases in their reading scores. Math students with disabilities increased by 10 points at Pocahontas Elementary. And their areas of focus, area of focus is students with disabilities that they sit at a level two. Powhatan Elementary has all green and one, one yellow. Level two is their mathematics, which I'll speak about in a minute. The successes they saw at Powhatan Elementary were overall growth in math and science. Students with disabilities in grades three, from, that were moving from grade three to four, saw reading increase by 23 points and math increased by 48 points. So, they saw some significant gains there. Chronic absenteeism also down 8% in the last four years. So, pretty significant increase in attendance there, which is fantastic. Area of focus that they have is English for students with disabilities is at a level two. In math, black students at a level two, and students with disability, level three. So, that's what got the, the yellow indicator, that level two in mathematics for achievement gap. At Powhatan Middle School, this is the first year that Powhatan Middle School has officially been accredited as a three-year school. If you'll recall, last year when we did the presentation, they had two separate ways of accrediting. One was for the sixth and seventh grade, and then was sixth grade, and then separate for the seventh and eighth grade. So, this is the combined middle school, the first official. And all greens, except for the level two in English achievement gap. Their successes that they saw were increase overall in English by three points and math by 12 points. For Hispanic students and students with disabilities, increase of 14 points in English. In math, 25 points up for black students, 20 up for Hispanic students, students with disabilities up 10 points, and economically disadvantaged students up 15 points. So, pretty significant gains that they saw at the middle school. Also, areas of focus for our black students in English are sitting at a level three, economically disadvantaged, and students with disabilities are sitting at level two. So, those are the things that they're focusing on as a school. And then finally, at the high school, all level ones at the high school, their overall success was seeing increases in English by three points and math in eight, by eight points. Black students in English increasing by 23 points, students with disabilities by 14 points, economically disadvantaged by five points. And then in math, you'll also see growths in those, in those same categories up to the double digits. But areas of focus that they have, and these, we've struggled to even find an area of focus, because the high school did have a successful year, but their dropout rate increased 1.2%. That's just truly less than a handful of students, but something that they continue to focus on. And then another area of focus, and I mentioned this at the beginning, is an indicator that's not being used yet. And that is the college, career, civic readiness indicator. It's sitting at a level three. It's not being used for accreditation until 21, 22. And we believe that it is due to some alignment in the way we have some of our courses coded, so that it's not being reported the way that it needs to. Because we know that we've got a lot of fantastic things going on with our students in those areas. So, we are meeting to determine, to make sure that the alignment is, is appropriate for that. All that being said, this final report came out, as I said, on the 30th. However, all of our schools have been focusing on the information that was in this report since June, when they finished testing. And each of the schools conducts a state-of-the-school meeting that is a culminating activity after going through and combing through all of the individual data. And some of these are examples of strategies and supports that they identified at the school level, based on what they found in the data analysis and what they felt were areas of focus. So, you'll see anything from progress monitoring in English language, language arts at the middle school, or culturally responsive teaching to meet the needs of reporting categories, which will address achievement gaps. That's going to happen at the high school. They've been working on that. Providing phonics training at several of the elementary schools to work on some of the English reading scores that they saw. But these are the different things that they have developed at the school level, and these are just some examples of the things that they've developed at the school level to address the areas that we saw that were areas of focus by school. But overall, it's been great core instruction by our staff, great analysis by our, by our administrators, a focus on considering each student throughout the school year to make sure that they are doing the best that they can. So, we're, we're very pleased at the overall accreditation report that we received this year.
All right. Thank you. Questions or comments for Dr. Mahundro or Dr. Jones?
Yeah. Mrs. Emel, would you like to start us off?
Yeah, go ahead first, Mr. Cole. No?
Mrs. Emel. Cole is yours.
Well, the slide nine, the strategies, the providing phonics training. We, do we not teach phonics?
Oh, we do. But we, we are, we identified that as a specific area within the testing that we wanted to make sure that we had, we were providing the right instruction to match the students' needs. So, we are providing additional training to our teachers.
That's just very basic, and I just wanted to be sure that we're doing that.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And then the one underneath, review and map courses for CCCRI at the high school.
That's what I get.
What is that?
I know. I'm sorry. I know I shouldn't use those acronyms. It's that college, career, and civic readiness index that I said is not being used yet.
Oh, okay.
But it is something that we felt like there is something that's not in alignment. And so, we want to make sure, when I say map the courses, the way the system works at the state is they grab data from a huge database that we have locally. And we feel like maybe the way that the courses are aligned within that database, it's not pulling the right data. So, that's what we're going to work on this, this year.
Okay. And then the areas of focus for the middle school, the black students, that concerns me. I'm very grateful for the other positive changes on the plus side. I think that's great. But we, we need to look at that. How many students are we talking in the level three there of black students? I guess that's slide seven?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we know that number or not?
We do know that number. I can get you that number. We do know that. It's also, though, when we start giving out specific small numbers like that, it becomes personally identifiable. We can certainly provide that to the school board, though.
Okay. Yeah. Because I'd be interested, and we need to, we need to get that corrected. And the Powhatan Elementary, the slide six, it also, they were only level two, but I'd like to see them level one as well, the black students. So, if we could get those numbers, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
I have one.
Mrs. Ayers?
Dr. Mahundro, I just want to clarify something that you said, because I know the answer to this, but I want to make sure everybody else in the world knows that. That when you said, and I know the areas of focus are for the individual schools, but certainly, that is a focus for all of us, for everyone in the learning community.
Yes.
That it's not, I mean, it's not just like, it's the school's problem and they need to, it's everybody's, and that collectively, everyone will work on that.
Yes.
Okay.
And I would, I would say this too. We're very fortunate here that we have the support of the school board and our budget, that we have resources, that we are able to provide those supports for students, and we will continue to provide those opportunities for students regardless of if they're at one school or another school. The division is collectively, and then, to your point, the community as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
All right. Mr. Cole?
First thing is, I want to make sure that, that you hear from board that we're very proud of this, and that we're very grateful to everybody that's had a, a hand in this. Because what I, what I see by this is, is in these categories where we have smaller numbers of students, what I see going on there is that we're not giving up on anybody. And, and, you know, it'd be wonderful, and I hope someday we can get everybody in every category to where they need to be. But I think we need to always appreciate how hard that is. Because you're talking about individual students who have individual strengths, and they also have individual limitations. And basically, what we're trying to do is we're trying to get everybody across the finish, the same finish line. And many of them are not starting in the same place. And so, I, I think, you know, I don't want to minimize the, the great things that have happened here, but at the same time, yes, we do have things to work on. And we're acknowledging that we have things to work on, especially with minority students and students with disabilities. But like I say, it's always going to be a challenge to get every student across the finish line. You know, in the overall picture, we've got some cushion, because we've, we've got a lot of students, and we can, you know, we can, we can, occasionally, there can be a student or two that doesn't get across, and it doesn't hurt us on our accreditation, because it's a small, you know, it's such a small number, but number of students. When you get into those, those smaller categories, one or two students can make a huge difference. And so, thank you for doing this. And I appreciate the information, and I think it's something, once again, we've got work to do, but I think it's something that I wanted to say, and I think the whole board says, "Thank you for this." And we appreciate and commend everybody that, that has worked on this, and with the understanding that we're going to continue to work and try to make sure we get everybody across the finish line. So, thanks again.
Mr. Chairman, I had a point for that.
Ms. Dr. Jones?
Thank you. I, I appreciate Mr. Cole's statement and the statements of all the board members. And a couple of things that I think it's important to remember. First of all, I was in a presentation today with it, Dr. Lane, the state superintendent, was leading. And he shared that there's one school division in the state of Virginia that made the mark when it comes to students with disabilities. One out of 132 school divisions as a whole. So, we certainly know that we have work to do, and we've made some tremendous gains, and we still have work to do. But this is a societal issue and a statewide issue, and it's one that we'll continue to work on with some of these, some of our students that are certainly struggling to make the mark on one multiple choice test. And I think that's the other point that I want to make, that this is one test, and it's one measure that, quite frankly, in Powhatan, we don't spend a lot of time preparing for anymore, because we think there are more important types of learning activities, assessment activities, experiences that we want our students to have, as opposed to just drilling and killing for one test. The board has made that clear in the past. We make that clear to our schools and to our teachers, that we want them to be successful. And if they are successful, they should do well on the multiple choice test. But we're not going to sacrifice and spend so much time reviewing and preparing for a test that we're not providing rich, meaningful learning experiences for all of our students. So, there is some trade-off there, and certainly, we understand that. But what the community has told us as part of our strategic plan is that's what they want to see our students doing. And that's certainly what we want to make sure we're providing for our students.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Jones. Other questions or comments? All right. So, Dr. Mahundro, I would, I would present this to you. So, and I've had individual conversations with both you and Dr. Jones, but on occasion, it's been presented to me by individuals that our schools are not performing as well academically as they have in the past. How would you answer that question in response to the testing information that you've just presented to us?
I would agree with what Dr. Jones said, that it's one measure, that if you walk into our classrooms and you see what our students are doing on a daily basis, that the rich instruction that they're being provided, the rich experiences that they're being provided, is never going to show up on a test of this kind of, with these kinds of measures. Certainly, we want to always achieve at the highest level possible. But there are ways that you can, that there are students who could increase these points if we wanted to drill and kill them, as, as Dr. Jones said. We could easily, in many cases, improve those scores by several points. But the point is, that's not what is making our students successful in the long run. In the long run, it's providing them the opportunity for STEM activities, for rich writing experiences, for things where they're getting career exploration, where they're going, where our kindergarteners are going out and learning things about what's going on in the community. Those are the things that will make our students stronger in the long run than just performance on a single test. But we also understand that there is value in reporting this information for a community as a whole, for economic development, for housing. We understand that, and we understand that we're a part of that. But I will say, if you come to our schools, if you participate and you see what's going on with our teaching and our learning... on with our teaching and our learning, this does, a single measure does not show what's really happening.
But I'll also add, Mr. Chairman, if I could, that if, that we're doing better than we have on the SOLs as well.
Oh, yes.
So, with all that said, we're still doing better on SOLs than we have in the past. This is year two of this new accreditation model, so you can't compare our performance past last year, but when you look at how our schools did last year compared to this year, we saw some tremendous gains across the board, some tremendous improvements at many of our schools. So, we're doing better than ever when it comes to performance on the state accreditation model, acknowledging that than ever is only going back one year. But certainly, we feel like we're doing a better job of pinpointing individual students, working with individual students, making sure that we're not forgetting any students and not paying attention to what their needs are. There's a tremendous focus on equity and making sure that all students have what they need to be successful, and I think that's where the improvements have seen.
Well, and I appreciate both of your responses, and I would say that I think that every student is worth our best effort, and I think that's what we're talking about. No matter their circumstance, it's worth the best effort to try to help them to perform as well as they, as well as they're able, with every support we can provide. But I would say that the response that you, that both of you just gave, I think that that's a valuable message, and I think if there's a way to present that, that's very important. And I think that it's also equally important that we celebrate success, and I think that in some fashion, this is, this needs to be shared more publicly than simply at this meeting, and I would just suggest that if there's a way to, you know, put this out on our website, share this presentation with a banner and some other information, as I look at the homepage, you know, we have some other good information out there. This is something I think that's worth putting up there and celebrating, because it really reflects the success of all of our students and our staff and our schools, and I think that some supporting language that you've just spoken to would probably be very important as well. But that's just a comment and a suggestion, so.
Mrs. Emel.
I agree with you, Mr. Walters. What Dr. Omahundro said in her first paragraph there, of what she said, if that could be somewhere with this report, I think that's very good, because you're exactly right. We don't want our students just to be regurgitating stuff and filling in bubbles.
Yeah, I absolutely agree with that.
With the experiences that they have, what you just said in the first, that needs to be written down. Thank you.
And it's also important to reflect.
Luckily, it's being taped, so we can pull the tape.
Well, that was a very good answer.
It's also important that our schools are all accredited, though.
Absolutely.
That's important as well, so. All right, other questions or comments? All right, Dr. Omahundro, thank you for all four presentations. We appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Have a glass of water.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Dr. Jones.
I believe that's all we have for the workshop.
That's all we have.
Don't we have one more? Civilty facilities?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I didn't go down far enough. Yeah, we have a facility in Capital Projects update. Dr. Tibbs is here to give an update on some closing out of one of our major projects and beginning of another major project and close to finishing a third major project.
Yes, yes.
Dr. Tibbs, welcome.
We're close, close, close. All right, so I'll be very quick with this. So, we've got three things we're going to discuss this afternoon. One is a train performance contract, which you know we've been working on since about February last year, and the solar PPA is getting ready to ramp up, and then the Pocahontas Middle School repurpose. Go to train first. Oh, you turned it off. Oh, well, I got it, I got it. It's all good. Okay, so, this slide you've seen before, water conservation 100% complete, building envelope 100% complete. Lighting upgrades, we've got two issues that were found when they were doing the lighting upgrades this past summer. One is main hall fixtures on, at Powhatan High School, the main hall. When you go down the main hall, there's five recessed candle lights, if you will, or, I can't think, recessed lights. And when we replaced the fixtures, replaced the bulbs in them and took the ballast out, what we found is that 150 watts of voltage coming through those lamps pretty much degraded the light sockets on them. And so, we have enough money built into the project that we have decided to go ahead and replace all of those, because we do not want there to be any issues. The wires down near the sockets were kind of fused together, and there was a lot of issue there, so we've decided we're going to go ahead and replace those. At Flat Rock Elementary, the bollards that are located outside predominantly in the courtyard, as well as across the back in the playground area, that when you walk up to a school, you'll see these poles that are standing up, and they just got a little bit of accent light coming out of them, they could not get the tapped screws that are down at the bottom, could not get them loose in order to replace the lighting in them. So, we've decided we're going to go ahead and replace them as well, as part of this project. So, the materials have been ordered, the group is coming back hopefully in a couple of weeks, and then we'll finish up that end of the project. The major mechanical pieces, the only thing left is the boiler at Powhatan Elementary School. We need to fire that up. We've already fired it up, so we know it fires up, but we need to fire it up and let it run for a little while and go ahead and commission it. And so, with the school being empty next Monday morning for professional development, we are going to fire it up, and the commissioning group is going to be there to go ahead and commission that. So, once that is done, it will be 100% complete, and now, all major mechanical will be done as part of this project. Our next step is the school dude automation, and if you'll recall, that is where we are going to be automating all of our facility schedules into the controls system, whereas before, the HVAC supervisor had to sit down for at least three or four hours a week and cross-reference from school dude into the controls module and schedule, for example, if someone was using the auditorium at the high school after hours, he would have to go in and manually schedule that. Well, the school dude automation is going to immediately talk, so we take that man time of having to touch every single facility request out. So, we'll get into that automation process. They've done a lot of work on the back end, and we'll do the training and get all that ramped up. I have a meeting with them on Thursday this week, with the train guys on Thursday this week, so hopefully, we'll have a definitive timeline as to when we will be totally complete with this project. Pocahontas Middle School repurpose, that is going very well, actually exceptionally well, and I'm very excited about it. These are some pictures of the roof replacement that's taking place. You can see the tearing up of the old roof and insulation that's there, and replacing insulation and putting down new roofs. So, a couple of slides with that information. As you can see, brand-new roof there, brand-new drains as well, and the coping will come in, and it'll look very nice and neat and tidy when it's all said and done. In terms of the interior, the interior is plugging along, and we are this close. I am hoping to be able to have an inspection scheduled for Thursday. If not Thursday, it will be Friday for sure for our final inspection, and so, what you've got here is you've got a couple pictures of one of the old art rooms, which used to be a technology lab on the left, and then the middle is the old clinic. We took the clinic, and we are making that into a break room, staff congregation type of area, so that staff will have a break room that they can go to eat lunch. This section here, this is the old, down the, towards Dr. Prince's old office, I'll use her, because I think everybody recognizes it when it was the middle school, but it's towards the principal's office. We took a wall out and made an inset there, and that is actually where Mrs. Hockaday will be located, and then, we took the old cabinetry out that is right around the corner and making that a nice seating area headed back to the office back there. The middle picture is actually the floor in the old kitchenette that we are now making a restroom. I haven't told Dr. Jones this, but I'll tell him now. He actually has ceramic tile in that bathroom, which is, we don't have it anywhere else. They did not factor that into the plan, into the scope, and so, they said, whoops, we left this out, but I've got some ceramic tile, if you want to put it down. I said, go for it, do it. So, we've got ceramic tile in that bathroom. We'll have to see how we take care of that, but it's all good. This is your space. This is going to be our boardroom. The left side is when the carpet came up, the right side is with carpet down. Furniture is coming tomorrow for this space. This picture does not do it justice in any way, shape, or form. When you walk in, you'll be amazed by it. We're very pleased with it. This is the main hall. What we did do is the tile in the main hall coming out of the library was very cracked and looked very bad, and we did not want to leave that there. So, what we decided to do is to take from the one pillar of the 1937 building all the way over to the other pillar of the 1937 building and do new tile floor. So, this is a brand-new tile that's down on this floor. This is the picture that you see on the right. It's got some accent colors in it to accent the accent colors that are in the walls in many of the office spaces, as well as in the carpet. So, this is a slide that I did last time. I've added quite a few folks to it, because as this progress, as this project has progressed from August to now, we've had quite a number of folks that have now come to the table and that are helping us. So, you'll see, I've added some people here. Many of these are Powhatan companies, and I'm gracious to them and thankful for them. They've done an exceptional job, and I'm glad that we have formed a partnership with them and could use them in other places and other schools. So, the solar agreement, as you know, we entered into a solar agreement with Sun Tribe Solar last May, and we have started that project. Actually, that project officially started back in the summer. If you'll recall, as part of this project, we did the roof replacement at Powhatan Elementary School on that low-slope roof. And so, that work started in August. They finished that up. I believe we were in school for maybe two or three days, maybe four days at the most, and they finished the roof up and they were gone. And so, we have had material delivery, that's what this slide is showing. We had material delivery at Pocahontas and Flat Rock Elementary on September the 20th, and then at Powhatan Elementary and Powhatan Middle on September the 27th. So, if you go to any of these schools and you look behind the buildings, you'll see some temporary fencing, and you'll see a lot of solar panels in terms of, on pallets and things of that nature. And so, the material deliveries went very smoothly. We had a little bit of a hiccup at Pocahontas Elementary, but it's nothing that we could not handle, and they've actually started work. On this next slide, you'll see, they started work at Pocahontas Elementary on September the 30th. And this slide and the next slide, what I'm showing you here is the anticipated start date for the projects at each school, the duration of the project, the number of modules or solar panels that are going on the actual roof, and this is after the engineering studies were done. They did not do any engineering studies until we signed the lease agreement with them. Once the lease agreement was signed with them, they started the engineering studies to see what could the roofs handle, where could they put all the panels and things of that nature. So, these are the exact numbers of panels that will be going on to the roof structures. And then, they also provided to me on my request, an anticipated offset. What that means is that is the percentage of power that we anticipate we will be able to pull from the solar panels and go through the inverters, convert it over, and then run it into the building and use instead of pulling straight from Dominion's grid, going through our energy system. So, I envision, and this is my opinion, I envision we will use 100% of what we're able to get solar every day during the school year. I'm hoping that when we ramp systems down in the summertime, that we will then be able to use as much of this as we can and then sell some of it back to Dominion, which Taylor Brown shared with us when he came and did that presentation. So, that is how this system has usually worked, and that's how it's worked at all of their other facilities, and so, they are anticipating that work in the same way here. So, Pocahontas and Flat Rock, and then Powhatan Middle and Powhatan Elementary. Powhatan Middle and Elementary will start essentially around the same time, because they're using one lay-down space for materials, which is right in the back behind Powhatan Middle School. We did not have a whole lot of space behind Powhatan Elementary to put materials, so we're using one specific space behind Powhatan Middle. Any questions?
All right, questions or comments from the board?
Chairman?
Mr. Kunkka.
Notice a significant difference in number of modules from Flat Rock. Is that all attributable to two-story, less roof area than the other schools?
Yes.
They didn't want to consider doing a ground mount anywhere to equalize that?
We've had conversations with them about in phase two, potentially doing some ground mounts, because that's a conversation we've had about Powhatan High School and doing ground mounts there, and so, once we get the roof ones in place at Flat Rock, then we can add that into the conversation as well.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, other questions or comments?
I just have one.
Mrs. Ayers.
I'm so glad that you presented this to us, because I had no comprehension of the amount of construction materials that would be involved in this, and when they delivered them at Flat Rock, I was like, oh, my gosh, what's happening that I don't know? But I did know about it. I just could not believe the amount of supplies it's going to take. So, that, I'm glad that I now know that that's not another school being built or something that I had no idea.
And one thing I did not put in here is any of the, well, all of the lifting material onto the roofs is going to be done by crane over the weekend. So, we have had a very, very stern conversation and a very general understanding. Student safety and staff safety is number one, and they recognize that. They are taking every precaution necessary, and I fully trust them, because they've done this in schools before. Actually, they're going to be at Powhatan Middle School this weekend with a crane to put materials up on the roof. So, they are not infringing upon us at all, they're not impacting instruction. The students nor the staff know that they are there, other than maybe hearing somebody walk across the roof, but in terms of, they are not entering in the buildings at all, it's a very seamless process.
Thank you.
All right, other questions or comments?
I had a couple, Mr. Chairman. So, did you get a chance to talk about the screens or the TVs yet?
I mentioned them to Dr. Jones, yes.
Okay, I like that idea. Do we know which area is the reception area that would go, or?
I don't have a picture of that on this presentation.
Okay.
But we can, we will certainly look at it. Once we, once I get everybody in, I want to get everybody in, everybody settled, and then we can look at that.
Can I ask, can I interrupt you just a moment?
Yes.
I'm not aware of what you're talking about.
Okay.
Could you pray a little bit for us?
Okay. Because what I was asking is, you know, all those videos that we get, that we see, I thought it would be very nice if we had a TV or screens in the reception area or hallways, so that, you know, when people are walking, like especially the gym area, when people are there on the weekends, or when people are waiting to see people, and, you know, we can show positively all these wonderful things that are happening in our county. And I asked him earlier, because I thought maybe it had to do with behind the walls, but he said no, so that's what.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure the board and the audience knew what you were referring to.
I just thought it would be a nice, positive thing for our school system.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and then, the second thing was the boardroom. How many seats do you think for our audience that we're going to be able to fill?
The capacity sign on the wall says 135. However, fire safety says 180, because 135 was including the stacks and the furniture and all of that stuff. So, what we have ordered is we've ordered 190 chairs that can go in that space. This has about a, I think, when I talked with Ms. Owens, I think she's right at 200. So, we're not going to lose that much.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? All right, so, a follow-up to the last discussion about this boardroom. So, it's, and I understand that the purpose will be for the school board to have their meetings there. That's going to be available to the public, just like our other buildings' rooms are. They would contact the schools to reserve that space. It's an additional area that's available to the citizens to have meetings that are, and it's available to them. All right, so, in addition to that, so, when will you reach a point of near completion? What's your date?
This week.
This week. All right, is it going to be possible, or would it be possible for the board to go take a walk through that structure before you move things in? And my thought was, I think some of the board members might like to see that and see what the status is, take a look before we begin to move. After that point, it's going to be in use, it's going to be office space, there'll be boxes and things. It might just be easier to do it before that point. So, I know time is fairly short based on the timeline that you just gave, but do any other board members have an interest in doing that?
I asked Dr. Prince about that, so, yes.
So, can I ask Dr. Jones, would you set up a date like that for us before the move, if it's possible?
Before the move, okay. Yeah, we were going to invite the board to come by once everything's moved over, but we can certainly arrange something before we start moving things. I think we start on Monday or Tuesday?
Yes. At this point, I plan to start on Tuesday. However, we cannot, because we're doing this internally. I'm not hiring movers. We're doing a lot of work internally as a cost-saving measure, so myself and the facilities guys are going to be doing the moving. Given that, we're not shutting down Skaggs Road to move everybody at one time. We're doing it incrementally. So, I've selected people that are going to be moved on Monday, and then I've selected, I mean, Tuesday. Then, I've selected people to be done on Wednesday and Thursday and Friday, and so, by the time five to six days goes by, we then will have everybody over there. So, if you've got a specific afternoon or evening over the course of the next week that works for you, just let me know, and we can make it available.
We'll send out some times, you know, two or three times that would hopefully work, We'll send out some times, you know, two or three times that would hopefully work, some in the morning, some in the afternoon. And then if none of those times work for you and you want to come by, just give me a call and, and we'll arrange an individual tour for you.
So let's do that. And, and what I'd ask is, once we've decided on a date that works for the board, if you're able to reach a decision or we're able to reach a consensus on that, let's, let's invite, I'd like to invite the board of supervisors, if they're available, any of them that would like to attend. They've, they've been, you know, they've been deeply involved in this process. So we certainly want them to have that. I would like them to have that opportunity.
Okay.
So, and that's just my voice as an individual board member.
I like that idea.
But I don't want it to hold up the move process.
I don't either. No, no, no. I agree with you, Mr. Cole. And I appreciate Dr. Tibbs' comments that we're trying to do this in the most economical way possible. Yep. I think that's, that's a very prudent way to approach it, so.
Save money.
All right, so other questions or comments for Dr. Tibbs? All right, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
All right, so now I believe that takes us to closed session. Mr. Cole, could I ask you, sir, if you would read the certification and make the associated motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, to make a motion, we go into closed session pursuant to Code 2.2-3711A1 to discuss the employment resignation and leave of specific employees. It's Code 2.2-3711A1.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please respond with aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. We are in closed session at this time.